All right, with Peter Rising, face the flag for the pledge.
United Legion, stood at the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My name is John Madison. I'm the town attorney. And until we reorganize, I just want to call the meeting to order, and then I'll take nominations. I serve as president of the council for 2025.
I get Alan.
Second. Nomination of Alan to serve as president. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion to close. I'll say. Second. All right, with that, I will take a vote to appoint Alan as president of town council for 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, Alan, your reading.
President pro tem.
All right, so nomination's president pro tem.
I'll nominate Brian.
I'll say. I'll second. Are you okay with that, Brian?
Yeah, you're here, I'm reading anything.
Can the president second?
In a small board, yes, to come in under rush rules, yeah. All right, so we have motion in a second. All those in favor of Brian Longmont serving as president pro tem, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. All right, now it's your reading, Alan.
Okay, everybody's had a chance to review the December 2nd meeting minutes. I have motion approved.
Second.
I'll make the motion to approve his presidency.
I do.
So properly moved and seconded to approve December 2nd regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Michelle, would you like to give us an update about hometown Christmas?
Yes, I think it went very well. We plan on moving forward with 2025, having another hometown Christmas like we did this year. Bigger and better. I hope you all got to attend at some point. We had the largest craft bazaar that we have had ever. For Christmas, we had a double, same with patrons. I mean, it was excellent. Brad Beeson, when I talked to him, that Saturday night in the middle of the spaghetti supper, he was just ecstatic because he said the 17, 18 years they've done a spaghetti supper, they had never had that large a turnout. So they were just very, very excited. Had a good attendance for the parade. Santa was loved by everybody. I think everybody saw the park all lit up. So we plan on moving forward with that for next year, and hopefully we have your guys' support as well.
Any comments from the council? Well, keep the momentum at a whole year.
Yeah, well, we started last year in January, and we have a meeting next week, so.
Good for you.
Now Jubilee Days, just so you all know Jubilee Days is set for August 1st and 2nd. You might already know that. At this point, we're planning on Fall Festival at October 4th, and then December 6th will be Hometown Christmas. The people I have talked to vendor-wise, I have several vendors that have already told me they want to attend everything Hagerstown has. So I have several that's wanting to attend all three festivals. And move forward. Did you guys see anything that you want changed or that didn't go well?
From my perspective, I heard a lot of just nothing but good things about it. I didn't, festivities, love singing the part with a fantastic job, you know, that, so.
Maybe get some more help along the way, once people see how successful everything is.
Well, we've had, well, my guy did put online, under the Hometown Christmas Facebook page, a survey. We did have a lot of people fill out the surveys. They were all very happy. There was only a few little hiccups that they mentioned. And there was a few that volunteered, said they'd like to help for this year, so that's great.
Good, yeah, well done.
Well.
Well, ma'am, on behalf of the council, we would like to make you our citizen of the month for January in honor of your work for Hometown Christmas, if you can come on up. Take care of that. May our month, your citizen of the month for January 2025.
Thank you very much.
Gary, Heartland Towns Town.
I don't have a lot this month. We are working on finishing, or starting to fill out and finish up our OAKR reporting for the year on all our activities and all of our things that we did last year. You know, without the help of subcommittees like Michelle's, you know, taking the lead on things, lots of things wouldn't get done, so we need all those people to still step up and help us as merchants and to help our city and town. The only other thing that I would have is, the heart of Hagerstown has given you our official opinion on the EDC agreement. And in this letter, I won't read it out loud to everybody, because nobody wants to hear me talk. We just urge the council to really reconsider where we are at on our relationship with the EDC. So take some hard thought into that, and we urge you to continue that relationship. So. That's really all I have. Anybody else need a copy?
Comments, professionals?
Chris, ready to introduce us with Mike Kleinhere.
Okay, we have Mike Kleinhere, and he's with Kleinhere Consulting. He's our grant administrator. And we also have Sean Kleinhere, who's been working through some of the financial parts of our grants. And Alan, how do you want me to do this? Do you want me to do like a brief overview of the grant or?
Yeah, just kind of get us back at the speed.
Okay, all righty, so what our grant is, we did scale it down from the original proposal. It's now a 2.85, $7 million grant. And the streets that we identified as being critical of our infrastructure were South Perry was a very big primary. That was like number one on our list, Walnut Street, the entire Walnut Street, west to east, sections of North Perry Street, and then also North Pearl on up Washington Street towards the high school. Underground, we would also be completing the loop over on, over by the trail part there, north of town. So we would be replacing the existing booster station for the high school, and also doing some other work with the booster station, which is located down on 38, which feeds the East Water Tower. As far as water main service lines, it would be affecting 142 of our customers. When we did the Main Street project, that was 57 of our customers. So between those two projects, this would be about 15% of our total customers, which is 926 customers. And then, if you have any questions about the grant that I can answer real quick, otherwise I'm going to print over to Mike, and he'll kind of detail a little bit of where we're at and what we really need, some action that we really need to take to keep things moving.
Sure, thank you, Chris. Mike Kleinhere, Kleinhere Consulting, the grant administrators on the project. So just to bring the public and everybody up to speed real quick, I just kind of wanted to do an overview of where we are. Back in 2021, we applied for this OAKR water grant, and we're unsuccessful when we applied for just a grant on Perry Street. Therefore, we took a step back and we did a preliminary engineering report in September of 2022 through a grant through OAKR in the amount of $90,000. That plan was completed in October of 2023. Then this water project was listed as the highest priority in that plan. From that report, we then submitted to OAKR for a construction grant in June of 2024 in the amount of $700,000. We, this is a competitive grant application process. We did receive funding for that application. And at the time we applied, we passed a resolution that committed $2,157,000 in local funds if we received the OAKR grant. We did get the OAKR grant in August of 2024. Since then, Triad, I think we've got Stu over here, has been working on final design for that project. And the next step is, in that report you see, that I handed out just your, this is your grant agreement slash award letter. So when you flip over to page two, 3B, you said was we have a bid opening date of February 28th. So in order to stay on schedule and stay in compliance with our OAKR grant, we have to open bids by February 28th. We're currently on schedule to open bids on February 13th, so we're on track. That's good. While you're looking at that, though, if you look at the next bullet point, which is 3C is in cap, notice of release of funds is April 30th. What that means is we have to have all our financing secured by April 30th. So we're getting to a point where things are going to start moving pretty quickly now that we've got design done. We're going to bid the project out once bidding's done, then we're going to know the final numbers, then we're going to need to close on our loan. So with that, we were planning on going to SRF. I think we've all talked about this already. We're just bringing everybody up to speed. SRF takes all the applications in, and they scores and ranks them, and then they draw a line, and that's called the project priority list. People above it get subsidized interest rates of like 2%, below it, you can go into the pool program. We were below it, so we're eligible for the full program. The only problem is the next pool program isn't until July or October. So that doesn't match up with our OAKR timeline, so that's not a deal stopper. There's other options. So to talk about those other options, I'm going to hand the floor over to Sean, who is the municipal advisor for the project.
Sean Kleinhere, appreciate you helping me, letting me help you with this project. So just real quick, like Mike said, the first place we went to SRF, and the reason we went to SRF is you get subsidized interest rates, you also get grants. And so we did that last year. We ranked 47 on the PPL, Project Priority List. Unfortunately, not in the fundable range. So with that, usually in the spring, SRF will have a pool program. They opted not to have a pool program. They said they're likely going to have one in August or September. So there may be an option through SRF in August and September, but there's no guarantees. That timing doesn't align with your OAKR obligations, so then you say, okay, what's next? So the next opportunity, and Brian and I have had a couple of conversations about this. From my perspective, the next opportunity is Indiana Bond Bank. Indiana Bond Bank, I've got the Indiana Bond Bank application here that I started. It requires some input from Ms. Julie here. She's been really great to work with. She's gotten me all the data I need for it. But we really kind of, the council needs to decide if that's a funding option that you want to bet out. Typically, the bond bank, once a month, they'll accept applications. The next month, the bond bank board will meet and talk about which of the ones they're going to fund. The month after that, there's a close. So as you can see, it's typically a three-month period. And as Mike stated, you know, if we're closing in April, we don't have a whole lot of months between now and then anyway. Now, the only downside of the bond bank, and this is something Brian and I talked about, is there is an incremental closing cost, where SRF typically has a zero closing cost, and they have subsidized rates. Once you hit the pool, you're getting closer to what we consider market rates, which is about 4.5% right now. Indiana Bond Bank is about 4.5% right now as well. So the only downside with going to the bond bank is you got to pay about $30,000 in closing costs, which pays for their finance guys and their legal guys. No government agencies are making that. It's the bond bank who they contract these individuals and help them. That's an option, and that's, if we don't do bond bank, then the next thing we got is really open market. And open market comes with much higher closing cost than the 30 grand that bond bank charges us. But that's the next financing option. Addition to that is, it's really time to get bond council on board. I think we've, November, provided an engagement letter for Ice Miller. Ice Miller's pretty good. I'm sure your town attorney can attest to it. But we need to engage them because as we move forward from now to your commitment date, which is April, we've got bond ordinances to write and to introduce, for the council to introduce, for the council to pass, and each one of these takes a subsequent month. So those, that three months will be chewed up pretty quick by the time we get bond council engaged. I got two copies. If you didn't print a copy, I got two copies if you'd like to take a look at that.
Can you explain bond bank?
Bond bank, okay. So in the state of Indiana, the state revolving fund was the one that does most of your bond issuances, and they've been doing that for a long time. Indiana Bond Bank is a quasi-government entity. It's ran by Jacob Blaisdell, and they saw a need in the, in the market to help some of these communities, like this one right here, which falls kind of in the cracks where they don't hit a traditional program, they really can't wait for a program, and they're really tied in close with SRF as well. So the very first question on here is, did you talk to SRF? And the answer is, yes, we talked to SRF. They didn't have anything for us, because they don't want to be seen as short-circuiting SRF. They're seen as helping support SRF. So Indiana Bond Bank, it has four.
SRF's decision not having a pool till later in the year, does that then push everybody towards the bond bank that's quasi-government or?
If they know about it. See, Bond Bank has not been doing it for a long time. That's why they're not staffed with lawyers and finance guys. So they contract that out. I think Bond Bank's maybe been doing this for 15, 20 years. And the, with the program we're going is what's called the Community Funding Program, and that's fairly new. They've raised it up to 20 years, up to, up to $10 million max. I've tried to see if they can go past 20 years for some communities, but they said the program is still, in their perspective, new enough that they don't want to lock their funds in too much longer.
Quasi-government, what's that referencing? I mean, is this a private, somebody's private?
No, no, this is, it's, it's so closely connected to the government. It looks like a government agency. They get some of their funding from the government, but they're, they don't fall under the government itself, I should say.
They're going to.
Where's the money coming from?
They're going to sell the bonds to a Bank of America, or they're going to sell their bonds to a big corporate bank.
So in finance terms, they were, they were going to underwrite the bond, so they're going to buy it from us. Now, they may turn around and sell it to the, you know, Indian State. Indian State may say, no, we don't want, then they might go out to the open market, to regions, banks, or whomever, and then sell it to them. So we're the issuer, they would be the underwriter, and they're, they're going to help underwrite these communities like yours that are looking for opportunities to issue tax-exempt municipal bonds.
See, Sean, because we talked about this, so they won't just take our small bond load. I mean, they're going to pull a bunch. So when they take it out to resell it, they're going to have $100 million or $200 million to sell to somebody.
Yeah, and that's with that board meeting, so applications, say we go in January 22nd, February 6th, the board of directors meets, and to Brian's point, they're going to have a list of all these people they want. And, and SRF calls a pool. They want to put them all together, pull them together, because the more they pull together, the lowest, the lower issuance they get, the higher rating they can get on their bond. So that's, does that answer your question about the Indiana Bond Bank?
They just wanted to understand, for a quasi-government, I mean, if it's not government, it's not government.
Will the bond bank be sufficient in covering the funds that we need, though?
Yeah, so Jacob Blaisdell's the executive director of Bond Bank. Just so happened, Mike did some projects with him when he was the manager of Speedway several years back. So we know Jacob pretty good, and he said, yeah, just make sure you get us an application as soon as you can, so we can consider it. The application is not that, not that honorary, but it just takes a little work. They want to know, you know, who are your big users? Do you have any big industry that may move out and stuff like that? So I mean, they just want to do their due diligence as well.
So the bond council, approximately, I know there's going to be approximately a $30,000 closing cost. The bond council is going to cost us approximately what?
Bond council probably going to cost you around 30 grand. Now, I don't want to speak for them, because they don't give you a contract. They give you an engagement letter like most of these professionals, because sometimes you might have some opportunities, like we worked with a community where we were able to get ready, a ready grant from them. So the ready in that region had funds that somebody turned back in, and we just started to know the individuals, and said, hey, we can help you spend those funds, and they said, oh, could you? We'd appreciate that. Well, I drove a bit more work and reporting on our behalf, so that's why it's kind of hard to kind of just put it in a box and do a. But to your point, bond councils typically are on the 30-grand range.
And Brian, the cost estimate that you've been provided already, there was a line for bond council rate consultant and legal fees for $145,000.
Yeah, and Triad does a good job of that, on the front, baking that cost in, because they know the market as well.
Stu, I mean, Indiana Bond Bank, do you have any concerns with that or anything?
No, no, we've, we've dealt with them before on projects, as they said, that it's, I would say supplemental, but it fills the crack there, the void and the need. It's another avenue to go to. Because mostly, people would go to SRF as we were hoping and entertaining you guys to go through was the possibility of grant dollars, of the special creation dollars that, that they can offer. But it didn't work out this way, just based on numbers and how they were doing, running their program.
This will eliminate us anticipating any SRF pools once we start the process for the bond bank?
Correct.
For this project?
Correct, you're right. Now, you can always do a round, you can always come back around and have, you know, if you had more work done, if the scope isn't entirety, and I think Chris was just alluding to that, this is another piece. I mean, when you come back again for the project, you come back through SRF again and take another shot at grants and things like that, because it is competitive, and, you know, it may have just been a very difficult round that they just had, so you might come back and it not be so competitive.
But I think really, to keep on these timelines, we've got to engage bond council. We've got to make a decision on bond bank to keep pushing forward with this grant.
So do we need the bond council first, or do you need the recommendation to go with Indiana Bond Bank? And plus, the recommendation go with bond council at the same time? Is that what you're asking?
It doesn't matter which one's first, just as long as we're all on the same page.
I'm going to make a recommendation that we go ahead and have our group contact or fill out the application for the Indiana Bond Bank to consider our loan of $2,100,000.
57.
Yeah, 57,000, whatever that is.
Or something like that.
Instead of lending on loans, the cap is on the spending, or, I mean, it's flat 30 grand? We know that for sure?
No.
Well, no, I mean, we, we don't, those are not hard firm numbers.
We don't have any choice.
No, I get it. I just, do we have to put that in the motion, though?
I don't think you have to.
Just be on those and call us, but.
Okay, so your engagement letter with the bond council is probably going to say something about it being an hourly rate. There's going to be some little room in there, so you're going to pay essentially what they charge you, but the element, I think, is $30,000.
Yeah, it's difficult.
Second.
So properly moved and seconded, we will inform with the Indiana Bond Bank, secure funding for this project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Who do you recommend us to use for the bond council?
Let me, Ice Miller. I've got two contracts here. This will have to print out in case you wanted to entertain it.
Do we need, we need to get them pretty quick, though, too?
Correct.
This is who we've used before, isn't it, Chris?
Yes.
Who did they used to be?
Wait, wait a second, back up again. Who is the end?
Ice Miller.
We have used them before, yes.
And I think they've got a pretty good reputation in the market. I think you're familiar with them.
Yeah, they do, and I served on Blue River Schoolwork for 12 years. We used them multiple times to issue bonds, so they're very knowledgeable.
I'll go ahead and recommend that we go ahead and enter into an agreement with Ice Miller to be our bond council.
Is that something we want to have reviewed by you first before we go?
Pretty sure I've already looked at it.
Yeah.
Back in.
You're good with it?
Yeah. And as I said, they're not going to, they're not going to change their agreement for us. But I think I did look at it back in November when we first kind of talked about this. You guys sent it to me. I'm good with it.
Okay, second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we engage Ice Miller for bond council for this project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And then the last thing for council is just to let you know that the bids will be coming out. Bids are going to be due at 2:00 PM on Thursday, February 13th. And then the attorney and Chris have talked. Chris is going to open those at 2 o'clock and read them aloud.
Come again, say all that again.
Sure. Bids are going to, sealed bids must be received by the town of Hagerstown, no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday, February 13th. A bid opening will take place at 2:00 PM at Hagerstown Town Hall, where Chris will be opening those bids publicly for anybody that wants to see or public knowledge.
On the 13th.
On the 13th.
So Stu, so these bids will be presented, presented by a general contractor, and then they might sub out some of their work.
Yeah.
But we're going to give, we're going to get an all-encompass bid for the whole project?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll oversee that when we do that.
Yeah.
Chris can, can open the bids, but normally we're here during that time. We take those under advisement. We do the background checks, make sure they have all the forms, the 96 forms, the insurance and everything with that, and then we can do some background checks, past projects that they, they have to show. Make sure that you're getting the best contractor. And then from there, we make a recommendation to you, which we form a letter, and then you sign it out. And then from there, you'll have a recon meeting, and then everybody will be involved with that, where you'll sign contracts with the awarded contractor. And we'll go from there.
One thing that we discovered in the meeting last week, if you recall when we did the Main Street project back in 2018, when we replaced, it was the 57 pits. That was a replacement of the water line, the water service lines back to the pit meter, and then the property owner is responsible for taking on to their building. But with this project as drawn currently, it did not include the full line back to a new pit meter, and that's one thing I would like to have as a bid alternate, and we did discuss that with Stu. So that would make it comparable to when we did the Main Street project. I think, Stu, if you want to tell any more about it. So basically, what it is, if the water line was on the west side of the street and it's now getting moved over to the east side of the street, there would only be a new attachment from the new water line back to where the existing service line was, and not all the way back to a new pit. So I would feel a lot more confident with the project if we went ahead and put a new pit in and then ran the new line from the new water main back to that pit. I guess my biggest fear would be of 142 connections that, right after we get done, we'd be having to rip one up because of a service line break or something like that, which I definitely don't want that to occur right after this larger investment. So that's one thing that I do want us to conserve as a bid alternate on this project.
So that'll just be your, on the bids going out, that's being included in it then? Okay.
Yeah, one of those, as an addendum on there, added on as it goes out to all the prospective bidders. And, you know, if things come around, you know, around, and then during the process, during the project, we have to make changes, and we will, but we oversee all that, what's done, what's best on your behalf, and what we would suggest, what the contractor has to do from there.
Anything further?
I believe that's the only thing I have on, on this project, yes.
Chris, does that include, once we dig up the streets and everything, that's all-new paving on all of the?
That is not all-new paving. That's, that, this is kind of like back when we went on the Main Street project. It's only paving over the area that is disturbed.
So why didn't we go with the full street pavement?
More, more money, yeah.
I get that.
Yeah.
I mean, because that's coming after that, because you're not going to put that down the middle of the street and have that last any length of time. That's concerning.
We can probably, correct me, we can probably get the money cheaper by the.
Community crossings.
Community crossings. Let those streets be the priority. We can probably get the money cheaper through communities and crossings than we can borrow.
Because it would be 25% of its $800,000 street repair would be $200,000.
As long as that's a priority, I would not want our streets having, because that'll, that is not going to be good. And then, once they do that, they put that temporary or that permanent patch down the middle of the street. And then, once they do that, they put that temporary or that permanent patch down the middle of the street, then if we go in with the community crossing, that's, what are they doing, are they going to rip up or just mill it?
Mill it.
Is that going to be a weakened part of the road then?
Probably not even where the Main Street was.
Okay. And it's fair, what other concerns about the state?
The state handles that one, that's right, that's right.
These are our streets now, I mean, if we're going to rip them up, they need to be replaced correctly, not just patched.
That was the beauty of the old programs a long time ago, for instance, you could do a whole project like this with, with line, anything that was underneath, buried under the streets, and you had sewer or water lines. And then you would, you repair the streets and then, uh, have new streets with, with new utility lines in there. It, it was called the ICE T program, in which they no longer have.
I was looking at the project at the La Sandal Street project, and then, that's what they did, they just ruined a patch right down the middle of the street. That's, that's not going to last with any type of traffic, especially on this South Perry.
South Perry's really going to be made up. South Perry's a lot of traffic.
Can I go back and ask one question? I wrote it down, but I don't know if it was a definite. So if, when we go, if the Indiana Bond Bank accepts our, our request.
Yes.
Is that for twenty years then, is that a twenty year term?
Yes, they'll go no more than twenty years.
But it is a twenty year term?
Yes.
Any further questions, comments? Any further public comment? Okay, moving on to council action, we have resolution number one, twenty twenty-five, year-end transfers within the same funds.
Yep, that's what we do every year.
I have a motion for resolution number one.
So moved. I move.
Properly moved in second, we approve resolution number one, twenty twenty-five, year-end transfers within the same funds, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? We have resolution number two, twenty twenty-five, the year-end encumbrances for twenty twenty-four.
So two departments, um, the airport, this one, so do, we have two items to do, the airport number, around seven thousand dollars, and then the airport, the. Fire department, um, has twelve thousand.
They'll have to be separately, right?
It doesn't have to be separate.
So the airport and the fire department can be done together?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept, uh, our per treasure's recommendation encumbering for the airport and for the, uh, fire station.
Second.
So I'm properly moved in second to approve resolution number two, twenty twenty-five, year-end encumbrances for the airport and the fire department, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I'll choose to abstain. And we have the annual nepotism certification forms.
Uh, John, for us, from your desk.
Couple things, so I emailed to all of you just a little bit ago, um, another draft employee handbook, um, so you can start to take a look at that, and then you all can decide what level of detail, if you want to have a work session, if you just want to talk through it. Um, but I know that sometime Rebecca wanted to do, and unfortunately didn't get it done during her term, but want to try to refresh and, and get that current. And then, um, had an email from Mike, I had asked him, one of the things I would like to do over this next coming year is to identify, make sure we got. All the boards and the things that you folks have appointments to, identify who those people are, the terms, all of that, so I asked him to start with the airport board. And then he sent me a resignation letter of Brent Smith, uh, he has resigned from the airport board effective December thirty-first, so. And I know Mike can't be here tonight, so that's kind of why I'm putting the update for him.
We, we.
You already. You've already done that? Okay, he gets, he just gave me that, so I'm going to make sure you guys have it. Um, so, do we have, we haven't done a replacement on that though yet, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we did, it was on the, it was a bond receipt of his.
Okay, oh, that's right, okay, okay, I can't remember that now.
Yeah, he had a recommendation.
Okay, that's right.
Yeah, I read.
It's in the minutes there.
Okay, so we've got that spread away, but that's one thing I'm, like I said, I'm going to try to tackle this year is make sure I at least have them. Identify who all is on what boards and when they're coming up, so he's giving me that list.
Chris Fester is who we replaced him with.
Okay.
Refister.
Okay. So, yeah. So I think I have those, so. Any questions, or do you think we agree?
Questions? Somebody had a chance to look at, uh, Brad's report for the E D C that he emailed to us. For parks and recreation, um, this time, I'll need to make the appointment for, uh, the liaison since, uh, Fred was our liaison. And I am going to make that appointment with Chris Woss, so here we are, liaison to Parks and Recreation Department. Uh, Keith, please depart.
All right, uh, few things, um. First is, I've got a lot of complaints in the last couple of months, and I'm just curious what council's thought was. Haven't run into a lot of issues with parking on Main Street between Washington and Perry Street. There's several business slash residents that, um, are parking their vehicles on Main Street in that area pretty much all of the time. Uh, as it sits right now, there's nothing illegal about that, but it is causing, um, issues with all the businesses in that area. As we know, it's, parking's always a big, a big thing, one of the suggestions from some of the business owners has been, you know, something similar that's in front of the post office. Where there's a limited amount of time to park, um, in that area of Main Street. So that we don't have large sections pretty much unavailable all the time. From my understanding, some of the businesses with individuals they're having issues with have tried to work it out amongst themselves, and that's been unsuccessful. So they've came to me, you know, uh, with hopes that maybe I can find a way to resolve it, or we can maybe entertain, you know, the parking time periods or limits in that area. So that's somebody's wanted to, um, bring up to the council, you know, obviously that's not something expect to, um, figure out tonight, but so that we're thinking about it. If, you know, I haven't even spoken yet with N dot to see what that process would be, if I have to, if we would have to have their approval to do that. Also because of, you know, the location, you know, with being a state road, but I didn't really want to go to that point unless that's something that, you know, council thought maybe that we should look into. So that's, uh, what I wanted to make you aware of on, on that.
So Keith.
Yes.
So if you do decide, uh, you want to put a time limit for parking, then that would have to be for the whole Main Street thing, I mean, you just can't put a time on, on one.
Well, um, like currently, right now, that's going on just in front of the post office. And see the, if the, that's the main business area of Main Street, once we go east and west of those intersections, it's pretty much all residential, so it's not the issue. The issue that, what I'm being told with the downtown businesses is customers are having to park far away to walk to get to their business. Because all the spots are always taken up by particular residents and businesses that, you know, uh, either reside or have their own businesses in that area. Um, but yeah, I think that's, we could definitely just entertain that between Washington and Perry, we wouldn't have to make that the entire Main Street. Um, that's my thought.
Walmart and parks in the parking lot and walks into the store, equal distance from that to the door of Walmart, I can't imagine being much different than being on Main Street. I'm just, I, I don't know.
I, I'm just bringing a problem that's been brought to me a lot in the last two months, um.
And what have we got, a hundred and fifty yards, two hundred yards? Business district, maybe?
Keith, have you given any thought about how you're going to enforce that?
No, because it, um.
Somebody's got to monitor the fifteen or thirty minutes, you got to tag a car.
Yeah, or, or.
Yes, I.
I agree, I, I agree, but I, I don't have the perfect solution to it, but maybe it's something between all of us, you know, we can come up with some type of a solution. Um, I, I don't know the perfect answer to it.
Enforcement is going to be difficult.
Yeah, it, it, it could be, uh, the flip side of that is, though, the vehicles that are in question are, we're familiar with, so we can pretty easily tell. You know, by going by how long certain vehicles have been there, but that is something that moving forward would have to look into, you know, how we're, how we are going to enforce that. Um, but. It's something that the majority, almost all the businesses except for one, are having major issues with this, and I'm sure Gary can probably, you know, speak some from, from this. Uh, you know, I've had a discussion with him and a couple of the other business owners, uh, in that area, so something to think about.
A double question, Keith, if those vehicles that are on Main Street, where would they go if moved, do they have alternative parking?
Um, I believe some do in the rear of, of the, of the businesses, um, you know, um, even off-street during, during the day. Um, the frustrating part of it is, is the one business that's causing a lot of the issue is it's, you would think it would benefit their own business to not. Park five vehicles in front of their business and every other business down through there, but, um, like I said, the, the other business owners around there have tried the diplomatic approach, and it didn't go very well, so. Kind of why it was thrown on my plate.
Um, any other questions about that?
Um, we are still down one officer due to on-duty injury, so, um, it's been a scheduling nightmare. Uh, we have been down one officer for either academy injury, different things, seven of the last twelve months. Um, so therefore, when that happens, officers who have vacations haven't been able to take them due to staffing. So I've had several officers have actually just had to cash out some of their vacation time, because it's just been unable to be used. Um, so hopefully, in the near future, that officer will get cleared to come back. Um, but. It's been a rough, rough twelve months with staffing.
We have a fit for duty policy, is there anything?
Well, with it being work comp, there's not a, we're kind of at their mercy until they, till they release the person to come back to work.
For how long?
I keep asking that, and, um, the answer I'm given is until the doctors say they're able to come back. They, what they've tried, or what they've tried to do is say, well, they can come back to light duty, and I'm like, a department our size, we don't have light duty. That, that benefits workman's comp, not us, so I've told them that, you know, we don't have light duty capability, that until they release them one hundred percent, they don't come back. Um, so the next follow-up, I believe, is January sixteenth, and we'll see how that goes. It's been going anywhere from four to six weeks between those follow-up, um, appointments, so. Kind of, not a whole lot that I can do there, but, um, I'm hoping that the end is in, you know, is close as far as for getting that officer back. Um, let's see. We did have a, um, local, um, dog agility club that, um, every year they have a five K run at, um, Mount Summit. And, uh, it's called Paul's Pups Are Up, and they stopped in last week and dropped off a seven hundred twenty-five dollar donation check to the canine unit. So that was very much appreciated, and, um, will be, um, used within the canine part. Um. The car for auction should be done by the end of the week, everything's been removed, um, it's in the process right now of finalizing, having all the decals and stuff removed for it. So, um, hopefully by the end of this week, next week, we'll have a plan on how we're going to go about trying to get that auctioned out. Um, either we'll do it like we've done some in the past, or I'm also going to reach out and speak with Brad Robinson about his offer to send it to their auction. Um, and see if that's still an option, um, but hopefully within, um, a couple of weeks, we'll, we'll have a end planned on getting that, that vehicle, um, off our inventory. Uh, and then the last thing that I had was, um, at the next meeting, I'll have my year-end report for you. And it's all I have, unless you have something.
The cruiser that you're going to replace, is that the twenty thirteen?
Um, the one, it's already, it was replaced last year, it was one of the original twenty-twelves that had been an S R O vehicle. Um, what we've done is we moved the two thousand and eighteen duty charger that was the canine vehicle down to the S R O. Getting rid of the S R O because the canine vehicle was replaced last year. Thanks.
Uh, Rick, Fire Department.
Um, for the month of December, uh, runs continue to, to go down a little bit. We're still above our average from what we used to be before all the EMS calls, but we finished the, with seventeen calls for, uh, the month of December. Of course EMS, they lead the, the calls every month, so. And they've been going down also, so. Apparatus, uh, we continue to work with two vendors, uh, to figure out why, uh, what we're going to do with six-four, the grass truck with the problems we're having with that thing. And trying to get some hard numbers to come back with the council on what it's going to cost to replace everything with it. The old Tahoe, the ninety-seven we got, um, we will get rid of that, uh, either auction it off with, um, with Chris if they have an auction here, or go to Brad. The chassis for, if we, if we do replace the chassis on the six-four now, that Brad is out, um, offering to take that over to the auction in Indianapolis and run that through. Which I would prefer on that chassis there to do that, I think we'll get more money out of that with the, um, auction of Minneapolis for Muncie, so. And I know the township has agreed, I mean, last time we talked, they had, they were going to put eight thousand dollars towards. And I know the township has agreed, I mean, last time we talked, they had, they were gonna put eight thousand dollars towards repairing it, and I did talk to Chris, he said, yeah, you can use it to replace or repair, it didn't matter to him, so, um. But I do want, um, I talked to Alan about this, and he was wanting to weigh in the first year, do a work session with the township to see what is the best, um, for us with the possibly doing a fire territory with the township. Um, so, I know I talked to John at the last meeting, he's said he's familiar with that, or he's that he knows a department that's done that, there's a lot of different things involved with doing a fire territory. Um, and the main reason is you do that because of funding, I mean, funding's getting difficult for every, all departments. So costs are going up on us, on everybody, um, pricing gear is going up. First of the year, you could probably bet that all of our gear and everything went up at least ten percent or more after the first of the year. So, um.
Rick, I have a couple just tough questions on that. And I don't wanna rub you the wrong way, but the the town of Hagerstown, who we're responsible for, is going to foot ninety-five percent of the bill on replacing a township fire truck.
The township is is owned by both the town and the township.
I understand that. So the assumption would be that's a fifty-fifty split. Which, okay, but then we've got a wildland fire vehicle that is rarely used in the town of Hagerstown for anything.
Do you have a breakdown on how many times six-four has actually been dispatched within appropriation months? Because I feel that, you know, I was in the fire department for fourteen years, and I don't remember very many grass fires in town, they were always out in the county.
We've had some calls for it in town, um, you know, when it snows deep, we if we need it in town for a medical, we use it there. How many times, I don't know. It's up to you guys. I'm just giving you the information, and the township has agreed or told me that they are not going to buy one and put all that money into it. We'll keep what we have and make it do. That's not a big deal, so if we go out on the road and the diff filled the plugs up again and it kicks out on us, then that's, I mean, that's fine.
Again.
Well, I understand that I'm where you're coming from.
And you know, I, we've had this great partnership for a while.
Yeah, I know we have.
And it seems to have been working, but then you, in your statements, money's getting tight for everybody, and that includes us. We have to borrow money to buy a new fire truck.
A lot tighter for the township, if you see their budget.
Totally agree. I mean, I I'm not doubting that. And here we set, gonna be asked, the town, the town of Hagerstown, citizens of Hagerstown are gonna foot a bill for a wildland fire vehicle that is rarely used. And funds are tight, just as you said. So somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to find a compromise here. I agree with you not to put money into that truck again. That is, that is, that is a money pit. That's been a money pit from the time we got it. It's just not used enough to clean those filters out.
And you know, the governor, if he does what he wants to do and cut taxes again, it's gonna affect us again another time.
And again, the town of Hagerstown, the town
Yeah.
who we hold the keys to the coffers on are gonna have to foot nine percent of the bill for fire vehicle for outside of this town limits. So we we need to have discussions somewhere along the line, because as we said.
Why do we need to have a discussion on how we're gonna do the fire territory? And if we're gonna do.
That's right, that's a whole nother discussion. I was just asking questions about six-four.
If you look at the fire territory, though, there's stipulations in there on you have to have replacement accounts for vehicles and stuff like that. Right now, we don't have replacements, an account specifically, um, for replacement vehicles, because we don't replace them that often.
Right, because we need financing to get a very nice fire truck, which probably we're gonna have to do again at some point in time with the other popper at some point in time, right? So then if we take money to buy a wildland fire vehicle that the town of Hagerstown rarely uses, then I think we would need to have discussions about that for the, for, as you said.
So what we need to get with the township, so, and I need you people on this council to be a part of that discussion because it affects you too, and you guys are make are the ones that make the ultimate decision on that on what we're gonna do. So, I mean, I've been going to and talking to the township and trying to work stuff out, but you guys have to step up when we have a work session and ask the tough questions there too.
Rex goes on the Jefferson Township advisory board now, I don't even know anymore.
Um, Ann Smith is one there, Gary Keesling, and.
Max, Max.
Max Smith.
Soliday.
Yeah, Max Soliday.
I I'm not saying no to it, I'm just thinking, you know.
Oh, I know, it's, that does sound, it is, I totally agree with you on this, but, I mean.
And I, you know, we got a tanker truck over there as well that's township
Yeah.
are operating. And it's okay, I think that's a great partnership, we've got, we're fine, but we're now we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars that, and money's tight.
You know, the engine that the township bought too, they got a grant through that.
Yeah.
So, and the tanker was bought and asked back, and then they had the money to buy it, and the price to replace that tanker right now.
Can imagine.
Yeah, it's, you're talking triple the cost of what it was paid for eighteen years ago.
So does the township own six-two?
Yeah.
Okay.
They first, that was, they gotta pay a grant for that. They were able to purchase the tanker outright, so, and then they do, they did give us, when we bought the six-five, they paid for the chassis for that truck, and the town paid for the rest, so. And they're gonna, the town flipped the bill for most of that, but it goes to the township and the town boat.
Right, that's a mutual way.
Yeah.
Used vehicle.
Yeah, so. And if we go on an accident, auto accident, we use it, it's mainly out in the township, so. But it is set up to run in-town and out-town boat, so. Um, so Alan, you need to set up a time where I can get, we can do a work session and go over all this stuff, so. we do have a member that's getting off of the department, um, Bobby Bollocks, he is no longer on the department. Bobby's, uh, served thirty-eight years, but due to health reasons, he had to step down, so. Um, we're still down four members, so, and maybe another one here in the next few months, so, um. It's getting difficult to find even full-time departments are having a hard time.
Is it because of the increased training requirements to give?
Pardon?
Is it because of the increased training requirements of the wanting everybody to be firefighter one and two and?
That's part of it. It's not all of it, but it's a lot. The state's really coming down on the volunteers on training and the requirements that they have to have before they can even, um, go on a fire, I mean, my guys go on the trucks, they learn on the trucks, they're not bad. In order to go through, to actually go into a structure fire, they've gotta be certified firefighter one and two before that happens. So, and that's a six, eight-month class, so, you know, when they work full-time and then try to find time to go to classes, so. I mean, I got on the department over thirty years ago and they and they gave me my gear and said, there's the truck, so, um. But it's, yeah, it's, the state's really putting some difficult on training mandates, so. But we need to train, I mean, everything's, stuff changes, so much stuff out there now.
Yeah.
You know, we do a little bit of everything. I mean, we used to fire departments on fires, now we do hazmat calls, we do rescue farm accidents, all of that now, so it's not just the old days where you had one truck put out a fire and go back to the garage, so. And, uh, it's a changing world in the fire service. And I'm sure it's a changing world in the police service too with everything, so. We do have our annual dinner, Thursday or Saturday at William Redd at six o'clock. You guys are more welcome to come down and join us, so, uh, that's all got.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. An advisory time commission, you ever give him?
No, we did not, uh, December.
We did, but there are two items I think we probably need to address, and one is, um, Plan Commission is recommending hiring Tom Cannon as our new building commissioner, and Tom is here tonight to get any questions for him. Um, and then the second item would be, uh, appointing someone Brandon Sanders has moved out of our district, out of our area. So that was, Becky Dirks is interested in a possible being appointed to that position, the stand plan commissioner.
Okay.
So there's, there's two items.
Okay, so, so there was, sorry, so there was some, um, stipulations with Tom's application for this, is that correct? You wanted more hours, full-time?
We did have a discussion about that, and I think as of right now, he was okay with twenty-nine hours a week instead of a full-time job, so, yeah.
Okay. Tom, is that something you're good, you are good with that for now? I mean, are we, are you, are you gonna be continuing to look for another full-time job? Is this a stepping stone or?
No, I'm I'm not willing to be. I am okay with that for now, in hopes that I'll be able to prove the need to have a few more hours added to the position, and that I'll be of value to do some things that may have maybe not been done for a while, or I just wanna get started and 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 I wanna show you that, uh, I can do what I've been asked to do here.
So you have twenty-nine hours to go here for that, and do you have a timeframe on it for now? Oh, no. All right, tough question, next year, tough question. Thanks, maybe more.
So, uh, it, we did, we didn't have a meeting, but we did go out by email to all the plan commission, and they had looked it over as well, and then when we got them the hours and the amount of the hours, it was recommendation made to town council to go ahead and hire Tom, so that will be a motion that probably needs to be made in.
Are you making that motion from the group?
I guess, since I said on the plan commission, did I need to make the motion, or, uh?
He's bringing it to us, right?
Yeah, it's your recommendation, I think you can make the motion.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we hire Mr. Cannon to be our building commissioner.
So.
It's been properly moved and seconded, so we've hired Tom Cannon as our building commissioner. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then I'll go ahead and make the appointment for Becky Dirks to replace.
Can you start tomorrow? Can you start tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll also need to make the appointment for Becky, right, because Becky is. Don't you agree with getting some position for plan commissioners, so I'll make that appointment.
Hey, Rich, got it?
Hey, we still are one member down on the zoning board too, so we need to look for that. Um, Chris, your report.
Oh, okay. Uh, let's see, I'm just all over the place with this report, uh, I'll just go down to your wastewater treatment plant, um. They've been assisting a lot with the decorations this year, um. Crystal and her husband actually made eight of the new decorations that you saw on the poles this year, which was neat that they were able to do that, um. Working, we're still working on getting a gas line installed for the generator, the dam and let station, obviously. Right now, with the weather conditions, we haven't been able to make any progress on that, but hopefully that's something we'll get here in the next couple of weeks. Um, I did have a meeting of our employees, we went over goals for twenty twenty-five. Uh, we really need to construct a walkway around the clarifier tanks of the wastewater treatment plant. It's a safety issue, that's something that I do have, I've had a structural engineer go down there and look at them and draw, uh, some drawings for us, so that's something we're gonna have to bid out to some metal fabricators. That's one thing I'm gonna be working on. Um, also, another thing that we need to do there is create a map, cross-referencing our video records of all our wastewater lines, where they actually are. In other words, they say on the tape, it will say College Street from Washington Street to Perry Street, but we don't have a cross-reference as far as something where it would be tape number twenty-three, you'd usually find it or that kind of thing, so I'm recommending that they do that. Um, water department, uh, I think goals really are to try to get through the, um, grant, all the work that we have associated with that, that's gonna be a big project for us. Um, now also, we want to purchase a new trailer for the wastewater treatment, or I'm sorry, for the water department, uh, store water leak equipment on, um, just to make it more readily accessible during a leak. Um, electric department, Joe and I were not able to meet with Duane Richardson from I M E A due to the weather conditions, uh, that is something I'm going to reschedule, and we'll try to get him back into that program. Um, I am still waiting on Vince with A E P to log in our electric rate. I think Julie, you've been emailing some financial information back and forth to Vince, so hopefully that's something we can get wrapped up here pretty quickly. Um, as far as twenty twenty-five goals for electric department, our current electric bucket truck, our primary one, which is the medium-sized one, is a two thousand and two model, which is really old for a primary bucket truck like that, that's used for electrics, twenty-three years old. Um, fifteen years is actually an old bucket truck. Ours is in nice shape and well-maintained, but as they get older, it's more difficult to find parts for them, that kind of thing. So that's something I'm going to be looking for this year, um, to replace that one. We did have a lot of concrete curb work done over here on the northeast side of town. I've got the price there, how much it was for six-hundred-foot curb work. Um, we're done with the leak pickup for this past year. We continue to get a lot of compliments on the leak pickup process. It's so much more streamlined than when we had everyone out there trying to trying to do it through the months of October and November. Um, twenty twenty-five goals, we've gotta get a community crossings grant project out for bids. Uh, that's something that we're gonna have to board at the February meeting, um, so I'm probably working on that the remainder of this week, trying to get that out. Um, I had mentioned, and this is probably something I need to discuss with John, the tree harvest at the airport. I know we had discussed, you were going to see if there were other communities, how they handle the tree harvest process as far as, does that need to be bid out, or y- you know, what kind of action we need to take for that? Um, so they are interested in getting the airport hanger back, the electric department purchased Marvin Stoller's airport hanger down there, and that's something we've been storing our electric equipment in. Airport would like to buy that back. If they do buy that back, we've gotta find somewhere to put everything now that's in the hanger down there, so that's something that we would have to work on, um.
Is that something, is that something we have to agree to, to buy that back?
We really would, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so when we had that discussion, the airport owns the ground, we bought the building.
Correct.
So is there compensation to the airport board for placing this building on their property?
There there would, we would, yeah, because the electric department purchased that from Marvin Stoller, so if they would buy it back, they would be buying it back from the electric department.
Yeah, but if we choose not to sell it back, and then this metal building is sitting on their controlled property.
I do see what you're saying, yeah.
But in that agreement, when Marvin put that up, there was that agreement that it's set on that property for a period of time, and that flowed over to our purchasing that.
But I I thought, like, if we, when we had the discussion about selling that building to somebody else other than us, that there was a possibility they were gonna have to remove that building because it was on.
It was on the airport board at the time, yeah, it was. That was, that was a sticking point, was, you know, if the town didn't purchase it, if, you know, if a private individual bought it, they weren't gonna be allowed to.
Correct.
It couldn't stay on the airport property, they were gonna dismantle it and take it someplace else, so I do.
Or pay them at the airport.
Or pay rent, yeah.
Or pay rent, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess, when you look at that, do you think there's a provision in that agreement that says we would not have to pay rent? Let's just say you chose not to sell it, and they wanted to get sticky about it.
So I thought we was looking to, do they own the, do they get the tree money, or does the town get the tree money?
Well, when I spoke, Michael spoke to me about it, he had pursued a bid, or someone reached out to him, and he had a number, and he just sort of casually was asking about the process, and then I think he said something to Chris within the last, I don't know, month or so. So we just need to figure out what that process would be. I think Mike is thinking the money would go to the airport.
But I'm saying, uh, does it though?
So who holds record title to the actual airport property?
Might do for sure, the county doesn't.
Oh, I believe if you look on Beacon, you can look on it real quick, I think it says, I think it says Town of Hagerstown, I think, but, yeah.
Do you remember which one it was?
It's Town of Hagerstown.
The property was purchased through a grant through the county.
Originally, originally. That's kind of a weird deal.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I mean, I would think if the town, the town proper owns the property, it would own the trees, and the trees would, the money from the trees would flow to the town, as opposed to the airport. That's, that's an off-the-guff answer, so I need to dig into some of those documents and make sure I was comfortable making that firm opinion.
Where does the money go for the farming each year from down there? It goes to end of the airport budget?
Okay. I couldn't remember.
How much stuff is in there, Chris?
I'm sorry, what was that?
How much stuff is in there?
How many trees?
No, I'm, the, inside the building.
Inside the building? It's, it's pretty full. I mean, it's, it's quite a bit of stuff. I think I talked to the guys, if we were to build a pole barn, they'd give me a size of one that if we built, I think it's like a forty by sixty, twelve-foot eve, something like that, that that would be an ideal size for what we have to store down in the, what we currently have stored in the hanger.
You have any questions? Alan's for Chris.
I was gonna do one other thing, and Rick spoke earlier about the auction. I don't know how you wanna handle that auction. We have two two thousand and four Chevy trucks that we need to auction off, but somehow, I don't know if that needs to be a silent auction, a bid-out-loud auction, how you wanna do that? I think Keith, my old police car, too, I don't.
Keith, you have a police? Correct.
Keith has a police car.
Art Arton has a vehicle.
They have a Blazer, I think, yeah. So, and I, that doesn't have to be anything, that's just something to think about, maybe here in the next couple meetings, we can determine how we wanna dispose of those vehicles. Abandoned house update, one fifty-two West Madison, they do have a new roof installed down there, it looks like they're doing quite a bit of work. Three oh-one South Perry Street, that's the house that we're going to do an immediate demolition on. They did get their environmental study done, which covers all the stuff like asbestos, old tires, old batteries, that kind of thing. So, we do have that done, it's ready to advertise to bid. Teeter Road might have a potential buyer out there, so I've just been kind of watching how that plays out. Four fifty North Plum Street, I was able to speak to Mr. Tom today, and he is, they're finishing up the house in Grayson Heights, and he said within the next week, they should be on the one here on North Plum Street, so that's where those are all at.
And just as a reminder, either two or three of those are supposed to be here at the next meeting to give us an update on progress.
Okay. Do I need to remind them of that, you think, probably?
Wouldn't hurt, but they were given notice, we set those dates at prior hearings, and they can't say they didn't know.
Okay, okay.
And then at that meeting, when they give notice, what is our next, are we moving, is there a process for us to move forward at that point, when that happens?
I think, I think.
If Alan, if you want to speak on that. We would have to convene a unsafe housing authority meeting again, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think the hope is all those folks are making progress and no further actions needed, but if somebody's not, then I think we could, we would need to, you know, call a meeting against, technically against the building hearing authority and take action. So, say we wanna demo, or we wanna.
So, if we, if we don't do anything at this meeting because we think there's substantial progress made, and then that progress then stops, are we starting over again?
I believe we gave everything that they had made, that they had, by May, if the things weren't done, and.
Because every one of those, we have an order on in some fashion, so.
So, we're not starting over again?
Correct.
Okay.
And those all, orders all got recorded, because that was a problem, because we had some of the properties transferred, but there's nothing on record to let anybody know there was an issue. Now, if somebody tries to sell, there's something on record with the county that they should know, that there's an issue, it needs to be addressed.
Anything else?
That's all I had, thank you.
Julie.
Okay. So, I have my yearly, we have two-year checks that we can void out. I just need a, a cancellation of warrants. Nay total, one thousand five hundred and fifty-one cents. I just need a motion, right? And then to okay, then we can drop.
It's a stalemate, isn't it?
Yeah.
So.
It's improperly moved and seconded, we approve cancellation of warrants for outstanding checks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, and then, so each year, we have Edward Jones, the town matches up to three percent for all participating full-time employees. Do you see a motion that you still wanna keep that going?
I'll make a motion, keep that going.
Twenty twenty-two, okay.
Second.
It's improperly moved and seconded, we approve the Edward Jones match up to three percent for all participating full-time employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And then, I just like to put in the minutes that the perforate, that the account pays is still eleven point two percent, this hasn't changed, but I want to get that in the minutes. And then also, we have the old account at First Financial, right, that it closed. This will happily close, but it's been two years now, and I wanna go ahead and close that account and move it all over to Wayne Bank. So, do we need to make a motion, or, I can only do it, they only open Friday afternoons and Saturday morning.
Unless you go, can you do it in Newcastle? Because they, their bank's open all the time, over their branch.
We don't really have much left there, do we?
There's like sixty-five thousand.
I would say listen to a motion, just authorize you to close that account and transfer funds.
I make a motion that Clerk Treacher closes the account at First Financial. First Financial, and move the funds to Wayne Bank.
Second.
It's improperly moved and seconded, allow Clerk Treacher to close out the account at First Financial. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'd like to take a moment on behalf of the town council and thank our employees that did a fantastic job over the last couple of days handling the snowstorm and dealing with all the things that came with that, so we do appreciate their hard work over that time. Next regular council meeting will be Monday, February third, twenty twenty-five, six thirty. Town hall will be closed Monday, February twentieth, to observe mark with a green June date. Everybody had a chance to review the claims.
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
It's improperly moved and seconded, we approve the claims as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. It's improperly moved and seconded, we approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?